...this comment, then we don't have to sign off on that plan, the final plan. But we did not approve of that plan. We only approved it continued upon them agreeing with those comments.
So we're not relying on goodwill for them to follow up on these comments?
Correct.
It is part of the approval that we're making that's on the table right now.
Correct. And again, eventually the borough will sign off or need to sign off on the plans before they're recorded. And additionally, there will be agreements or contracts, whether it be the Borough or the Homeowners Association Declaration filed against the property that are going to create covenants that they have to follow.
Anything else, Charlie?
No, thank you.
My only concern right now is just our protocol. I mean, we asked for public comment before people were able to hear and react to the engineer's response. He thinks very thorough. I can just keep the -- there's no other meeting opportunity for them to respond if council's going to approve or not approve of this. And I think it's reasonable to ask if there's any specific public comment on this in a brief manner. There's a lot of people who came here. I don't know if they have additional questions or concerns, but once we vote, it takes us ten, five or 10, maybe 15 minutes to hear that. I don't think it's that ordinary.
I'm a little torn on that. We had public comment. Everyone had an opportunity to speak. We are in the middle of a motion, not an open comment, in the middle of a motion. If, I guess if there's a will on council to move to table, we could move to another public comment session a little later in this meeting and then reopen the motion during this meeting when we're going to take some action. But otherwise, we could move on this motion now. And then I'll make a determination as whether we have a second public comment period on the agenda later in the meeting. In the middle of a motion.
For what it's worth, I'd also be in favor.
Where I?
For what it's worth, I'd also be in favor of table. I'm thinking at the time there's a public comment.
Okay. And if we were going to do that, I want to make sure that the public understands that public comment is not public question and answer. I'm not going to bring the borough engineer up here to answer specific questions. You heard his comments on the matter, and it would provide an opportunity for the public to make comments to us, feedback on what you heard, and then we can move to open this up again. Does that sound like a plan? So if someone wants to make a motion to table?
I'll move to table. Motion to table.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So motion is table. Let's move on. Let's do the rest of our action items, and then we can go public comment. We'll have three options.
I move that Borough Council adopt attached resolution 2017-003, sketch plan approval of minor subdivision plan for Sabine Avenue.
Second. All right. All in -- any discussion? Mr. Metcalf, can you give us a 30-second summary on what we're doing?
What's after for you is a sketch plan that they're asking for approval of and condition of re-submission of its preliminary final plan according to the condition of the resolution. It's a minor subdivision of a residential lot on Sabine Avenue to two lots, no buildings proposed at this time.
Any further discussion from council? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Moving on. How it works?
Resolution. I move that Borough Council adopt the attached resolution 2017-04 entering into a sidewalk maintenance agreement with Penn dot for SR 3044 Woodside Avenue grid sidewalk.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Metcalf, can you give us a little background on this sidewalk maintenance agreement?
Part of Penn dot's rapid bridge replacement program, the culvert that conveys these branch of Indian Creek underneath East Windwood Avenue from Norbert and Shortridge Park is being replaced. That's construction scheduled for 2018. And what council has before it is the standard Penn dot boilerplate maintenance agreements that confers future maintenance and snow removal to the borough for sidewalks in the area of this work that's to be done. And it's a standard thing that Penn dot does at this stage in the process. And that project, if I didn't, I'm sorry, I don't remember if I mentioned, will be to the end of 2018.
Any discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Anything else have it?
Ordinance 998. I move that Borough Council adopt a catch ordinance 998 in ordinance reestablishing the Borough of Norbert Recreation Board, providing membership requirements and terms, reestablishing procedures for the conduct of business, vacancies, reimbursements, and reports, and reestablishing the purpose and duties of the board.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Councilor Fordner, maybe you could give us a brief background?
We, in getting the Recreation Board to kind of re-energize and be more of an advisory body to council, we learned that the last time the Recreation Board was established was in 1929, and no changes had been made since then, and it was just totally out of date. So we had to draft a new ordinance that fits what the world we're in today. And council has seen it, and we've had some questions and things, you know, all your tweaks, and it's ready now to be adopted.
Are there any major changes?
No, I wouldn't call them major. I mean, there actually weren't some things in the 1929 document. Like, it didn't say how long anybody's term was. I mean, it was very different from the way you would make an ordinance today. So we brought those things in. But no, I wouldn't say anything major at all.
Okay. Any other council questions?
To step to record, the public hearing aspect of any ordinance. So going to just adjourn this public meeting and adjourn briefly to a public hearing.
So adjourned?
Recontinue the public hearing. And at this time, we will have the public hearing on this ordinance under the mark of exhibit. This is the first one, exhibit one, the ordinance itself. Exhibit two, legal notice of the hearing for tonight. Exhibit three, the proof of publication for this hearing, which was in the February 1st, weekly publication of City Suburban News. Exhibit four was proof of submission of the ordinance to the Montgomery County Law Library to your honor about January 25, 2017. Does anybody present here today have any comments that they would like to make known to council regarding this ordinance? Hearing and the seeing none. I will close this public hearing and adjourn back to the public meeting for this ordinance to be considered, council.
Thank you.
I'm still not sure what.
I'm sorry. Members of the public, this was a brief pause in our meeting to have a public hearing regarding ordinance 998, the Recreation Board ordinance. Right? It's back on the table.
Which is required under the Borough Council.
Hearing no further discussion. All in favor of approving ordinance 998 for the Recreation Board? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None, it is unanimous. All right. I'll take a motion to amend the agenda, add 7G public comment and 7H reconsideration of resolution 2017-002.
Hold up that motion.
And a second?
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor of amending the amendment? You're welcome.
Aye.
Aye? Okay. Thank you. Now, 7G public comment. I will start in the front row. I will work my way back. If you have comments specifically about 424 Conway Avenue, 31 Price Avenue, final subdivision and land development plan, we would love to hear from you if you could state your name, your address, and I will limit a comment to three minutes. Thank you. Front row. Mr. Brault?
Thank you, Mr. Mark. We appreciate all the time that this council has given to this application for the kind of sketch preliminary plan and now the final, at the same time that your planning commission has given it. We appreciate the members of the public that have attended these meetings and taken their time to make sure that this is properly designed, which I think you have agreed that it is, and I think we had very favorable reviews on the design through the process by your planning commission, by the county planning commission. And we had done a lot of things that addressed various concerns and preferences, frankly, that were expressed along the way. And I think it's resulted in a good plan. So we're here at this moment with our final plan application, and just a couple of comments on the score. Number one, we will comply with all of the suggestions and the recommendations, and I submit to you that they are minor. With regard to the infiltration, there was a letter that was prepared for a property owner by Damon. And I think if you fairly read that letter, it's academic in its approach, on its approach as to what possibilities are to the proximity of the infiltration basin within 40 feet of the property. I think Mr. Popple had expressed his professional opinion that it was fine, but in order to be conservative in approach, makes more sense to shift the infiltration to a basin that's 120 feet away rather than 45 feet away. And we're perfectly fine with that. The letter I don't believe, the letter that was prepared by Damon was not addressed to Kenone or the borough engineers, so understandably, Mr. Popple did not get back. But I will say, our engineer, Mr. Yon, did, and took the opportunity to get back and have a discussion with Mr. Damon. And we believe that the change that has been made here, the suggestion that we do the infiltration of a basin to address his concerns. If you have any specific questions of the conversation between Mr. Yon and Mr. Damon this year, he's happy to answer them. But we believe that the plan is in good order. You've got an excellent engineer, an excellent engineering firm, and we would ask that you grant final approval to him.
Thank you. Moving down to the front row. Just state your name and your affiliation.
My name is Chris Yon, and I am the engineer of the town. And so like, first, I was here to answer questions of your, and I don't have anything else to ask.
Second row. Mr. Davis, coming down. Third row. I'm sorry.
I live at 41 Norbert Park. I just have a simple question. I've heard two different answers to this. Will there be an entrance and an exit from Conway Avenue?
Okay. I will break down that question, and when council takes up the motion, I'm sure one of the council members will address it. Over on the right here.
Joan Barracca, represent Barracca Family Trust, owners of 33 Price Avenue. And I appreciate the attention that was brought to Mr. Damon's, from Mr. Damon's recommendation very, very much. I heard when our borough engineer spoke, could and would, or could and possibly not cause 33 Price Avenue to have water. And that was a concern that I have. We have absolutely no water in our basement at this time. It is bone dry. One of my long-term tenants is here. You would like to hear from her. So when I hear could or possibly cause water in the basement, I still have concern. So if there is, or if there's a result from the development, what recourse would I have?
Again, I'll.
Okay. Thank you.
Coming down, let's, yes, man in the.
I'm Connie Stelzamoller, 31 Norbert Park. And I believe you all got an email from me several days ago. And I'm not going to repeat what was in the letter, because it's, I think it was fairly clear. In coming, in just mentioning the water, the concern would be that Norbert Park has always been sort of a, well, the stream has always been a retention basin for any development that has been around. So you can imagine why we feel the way we do with one more development going in, and now I hear that there might be another small one up on Sabine Avenue, and there might be other places also. So the concern is that the council is aware of the cost that we're bearing to keep that retention basin from eroding, and I think my letter stated all of that. And the fact is, one of the households, as I mentioned in the letter, already has an open trench where water flows through it, and that's the way it's been for years. So if I could just say that any extra development, any extra, anything that gets dumped into Norbert Park is a big deal, because it's not static. That is a retention basin, so that's why we continue to kind of come to you about this. You've done a great job, I think, in letting us speak earlier, and you've looked at the plan thoroughly. It's just that, just as she mentioned, we're looking for the same kind of help from the borough. We've shouldered the expense of the erosion and propping up the spillway, having masons come in and fix the surrounding stonework. So if I could just leave one thing with you, it would be that, that any extra, anything that is dumped into the stream is a problem, because it does add that much more to it. And the surrounding basements certainly are taking their brunt of it now and would do it again. So it's a peculiar situation there, you know? We're not just a one house that is worried about it. It's the whole neighborhood. Thank you.
Moving down to the left. Okay, last row. Ms. Rothman?
Hi, my name is Cindy Rothman. I live at 32 Norbert Park. I lived there for 23 years. When I bought my house, I had four sub pumps in my basement. I really didn't know what a sub pump was at the time. What I've come to know is that Norbert Park and lots of Norbert was built on a swamp. And my concern, as in my neighbors, with every little bit of development anywhere, the water just wants to get to the stream. That's where it wants to go to. It always has, always will. We had to, I apologize for being late, but we had the conservancy out there last spring trying to rebuild the stream bank wall from erosion. I cannot imagine what one extra trickle, really one extra trickle, would do to not only the impact in front of our homes. That water flows underneath the playing field. It's going to change the plan for the rain garden. I mean, there's, everything has an impact on something else. So please, just remember that Norbert Park's infrastructure is very timeless.
Mr. Nixon?
Elizabeth Freeman, 33 Price. I'm a very long-term resident. All basements in Norbert are wet. Our landlady has done enormous work to keep the basement dry, and it is dry. Secondly, I guess the major current concern that I have, or recommendation, if we could have another holding tank to try to remedy the concerns that the residents are having in this area, that's a huge additional, a huge additional engineering nightmare, possibly. But an additional tank would just remedy, and again, we cannot, these water levels were based on what has been before. And if you look at just our natural ecology at this point, and not that we can project what future will be with the, as some people say, imaginary global warming, the amount of water down may be even more than our past 40, 50 years has been. So it's something that I'd like the council to think about, even though it isn't particularly noted statistically, what that may be down the line. And then there's one other thing that, I'm sort of working at 6:30 this morning on a little punch trumpet here. I just want to appreciate the level of cooperation that all of the neighbors have been playing with to try to make something that's win-win. I'm still an advocate of just having fewer, you know, fewer condos, maybe six rather than nine. Three big buildings make a lot of money and just keep the area more residential. I don't remember my last comment, so be it.
Thank you.
Hi, Marla Sussman, 42 Norbert Park. Thank you all. I think this is a great way to kind of all of us get together and talk about stuff, and I appreciate the support of, you know, everyone. You know, to echo what everyone, all the neighbors have said so far, you know, I am directly across the street from 33 Price, and I'm on a hill. So it's, you know, I've lived in my house, it'll be two and a half years now, and we've never had water in our basement. So, you know, this does stress me out a little bit. It's not a finished basement, but it makes me nervous. You know, the stream also, of course, I'm not going to repeat what everyone else said. You know, we have a pool in our backyard, and I worry a little bit about, I don't know if that could have any impact on it, and that's certainly nobody else's problem, but it's something that I think about with all of this. In addition, and I don't know if to specifically mention it, I don't know if I'm allowed to say it, but we, I did hear that, and I don't know where, if, and when this construction does begin, if the holding staging area would be on Price Avenue, but, you know, for those of us in the park that, Christine, myself, Kenny has driveway, but 33 Norbert, and there's a couple of houses, you know, we don't have driveways. So for us, like, this is where I park, my husband and I, every day. We don't have, you know, it's not like we have so many cars. We just have two cars between us. But, you know, that's a concern. I know it's probably also not an issue that, you know, my kids play there, but because it's a dead end, and it's always been that way. But, you know, our concern is the amount of traffic. So if I could echo Elizabeth in saying, if there was a way to lessen, if this does go through, a consideration hugely appreciated would be less properties. Nine seems like a lot. Thank you.
Ken Jevs, 43 Norbert Park. I, I'm going to try not to be shrill, which, and I know my repeated emails have been shrill, and that's mostly because there is inevitably no reply to them. And to show at a meeting and hear that there's going to be no comment or discussion makes me crazy. It was eventually granted, and I appreciate that, but I feel like it's falling on deaf ears, that I have raised the issue of water over and over and over and over again. And it's like, nobody ever heard of it. Oh, my gosh, water's going to go into storm drains and go into the creek. Oh, my gosh. I understand there's not going to be more water coming onto the property. The rain is the rain. But how it's channeled is going to change. And I know that my basement also has four sub pumps in it already. And if I understand the engineer correctly, he can't comment on the water table, or whether it'll rise or not, or where it's going to come in from. But I'm probably 30 feet below the development, and no matter how far away it is, it's all going to flow towards me, towards the creek. And if that water table rises at all, the French drains that I spent $10,000 on, and sub pumps, it's not going to make a damn bit of difference. And no one in this process had asked repeatedly for them to take, whether or not it meets the zoning criteria and whatever for that particular property, is there no accounting for the neighbors? Is there no reason to table this and say, okay, let's try to figure out what the water table is next door? I've been asking for that repeatedly. The $100 answer is, the water table's really low, it's not going to affect anything. But I don't want lawsuits, which I'm sure is going to be the answer to what we have to do next when the basins all get flooded and the creek bank washes away, and everybody says, eh, what a surprise. It was academic. Where else is the bar going to go? And it seems that I am stonewalled at every turn in asking for what I think of as, not only courtesies, but just common sense to, again, I understand that it may meet the zoning code and the criteria, but this is not, this is not, this is real life, that I think there needs to be some consideration, and that's what the community is about. Number one, responding to emails. I mean, everybody's copied of them. I never get a reply from anybody until I send it, until I send it the fifth time, and I'm really shrill on an email. So it's not like I haven't asked you guys to be aware of this. And the community is really concerned about what's going to happen. And it seems like we're getting no consideration. So.
Thank you. All right, that's everybody. So I will close public comment and take the motion to put this meeting back on to the table.
I move that resolution 2017-002 be returned to the table.
It's back on the table. I wrote down a number of concerns in the public comment, and I hope that Mr. Popple could come up, and I'll kind of steer these questions a little bit. I would love if maybe you could speak towards what retention basin is, how infiltration happens, and specifically speaking to, say, Norbert Park, Creek, Norbert Creek, or basements, the, you know, the volume of water versus the length of time in which it is released, and how that works.
Beginning of Indian Creek. Indian Creek.
First, if I may, you know, there was some discussion about water means basements, and I had mentioned that because that's specifically mentioned in Damon's letter, that he has spoken with an employee at the property of 424 Conway Avenue, at 31, or, I'm sorry, at 33 Price Avenue, and the employee had identified that they have experienced problems with groundwater infiltration into the basement. And based on this, requested that they review the stormwater management system. Then due to the concentration of collected runoff in its position directly above 33 Price, the proposed storm tank unit has the potential to create a mounding of the groundwater level at the basement. This potential groundwater mounding would increase the water intrusion into your basement. So that's what I was addressing when I.
So you were specifically addressing the basement at that property based on the concerns of that engineer about that address?
Exactly.
Could you speak generally, if that's at all possible, about the impact that this might have on basins that are 200, 300 feet away down gradient?
I think that, yes.
Basins, not basins, yes.
Right, right. So basically, the stormwater from this property is managed, or it's collected in roof drains, it's collected in inlet on the property, and from those inlets, it is directed into two stormwater management systems. The one stormwater management system is, as we've discussed, approximately 40 feet away from 33 Price Avenue, and the bottom of that basin is approximately 11 feet above the basement of 33 Price Avenue. And all of that information, I have not inspected the property, all that information is based off of the letter that Damon had presented. Our recommendation was to basically create an impermeable liner around that base, stormwater management basin. So any water that gets into that basin will then be retained in the basin, will not infiltrate into the ground, and will be released at a slower rate out into the stormwater management, the township's stormwater pipes. Slower rate than, a slower rate than what is existing from the property.
Could you discuss why that is good and how that works from a stormwater management perspective? Real 101.
Okay. So rainfall comes down from the property, and it has runoff characteristics where if it hits an impervious area, like a driveway or a roof, it runs off the property at a fast rate. At that, at that time, it then is distributed with velocity across the properties or across the surface and gets into the stream at a faster rate. With permeable areas, grass, lawn, portions of that water are infiltrated into the ground, and less volume is then runs off the surface and gets into the stream. The overall benefit for infiltration is water that runs off pervy, or impervious areas like driveways or roofs carries with it a lot of pollutants. And so any water that is infiltrated into the ground, nature takes its course and cleans up the water, so there's a water quality. quality benefit to it. But then also, because it runs off at a slower rate, it has less velocity, it has less potential to erode the stream banks within the stream. So the idea behind the stormwater management requirements is to hold back the water that is on the development to a point where it runs off at a rate that's less than what was there before, and so...
Could you give me an idea, say, that basin fills up with a big event, right? It's designed to fill in a, what size storm?
We've analyzed, well, the applicant's engineer has analyzed the basin for a one-year storm, which is a storm that has the potential for occurring every year, which is approximately 2.8 inches over 24 hours. And they've analyzed it for a one-year storm, a two-year storm, a five-year storm, a 10-year storm, a 25-year storm, a 50-year storm, and a 100-year storm.
Do you have an idea of how much precipitation is a 100-year storm?
It's 8.4 inches in a 24-hour period.
Okay.
So all of those, so that analysis has shown that the stormwater management systems are holding that volume of water back on the property and releasing it over time, over 24 hours.
Say about a 24-hour period? Would be a release time for a basin like that?
It's probably, the actual release time is quicker, but there's an infiltration volume that is below the pipe that comes out, and so that empties, basically based on the site characteristics, or the characteristics of the soil underneath the basin.
Can I just ask for a quick clarification?
We're not taking any questions from the public. I'm sorry, Ken, but this is the process.
I just have to reply to the questions from you.
This is the process. This is not a question and answer. This is a council business meeting. We took your comments, and I'm going to try and direct answers to all of the questions.
So if I can follow up, roof drains, inlets on the property are all directed to each one of the stormwater management systems.
Do council members have any questions about the stormwater management system as just described?
One person asked, could there be an additional retention tank? I guess an additional PCSM. And I was just wondering, would that really make any difference? It sounds like, given that this has been designed to handle up to a 100-year storm, that there wouldn't be anything really gained from that.
I think that's a relative term. I mean, would, you know, you could pretty much require a tank be installed that controls the 100-year storm for, I mean, the more volume that you hold, yes, of course, there's going to be less that is, that runs off downstream, but I think that what is presented and what was provided with this plan shows that it's meeting the code requirements, it's reducing the volume and the rate of runoff over what's there now.
So there will be less volume and less velocity than what there is today?
Correct.
Even though these units would be disrupted?
Yes.
The greater runoff will be reduced versus today, even though, you know, if I go out there and I look at the property, I see all this impervious surface that wasn't there before. That's what the management system is.
Correct.
Can we talk about, well, any other council member questions for Mr. Poco? I just have a question about, what I have remaining is the exit and the entrance on Conway.
Mine was the staging area.
And the staging area. Do you have any comments about the staging area or something to discuss?
I believe the, I believe that the construction entrance is off of Price Avenue for the development. The staging area, I don't believe that's shown on the version of the control plans. Just in my experience in looking at how construction projects are developed, I believe that the staging area is going to be right in the area of Price, but like I said, I'm not a construction manager, so really, once the contractor gets out there, they're going to determine the best place for their construction, staging area.
That was a concern at the planning commission meeting, from the planning commission members who realize, one of the neighbors brought that up, and they say, wow, why would you be staging the public street? And they should, you know, try to acquire them or something. That's why, so nothing has changed since the original submission on where the staging area is, and is that considered at all?
Because that's usually not part of the plan.
Staging area is part of it. When is that considered to make sure that it's, these limits of the neighbors have to go through the construction process?
Well, Mr. mentioned, if they were to use Borough Street for that, would they have obtained a Borough permit?
Well, to date, there's been no discussions between applicant and Borough as to how the project would be staged and what it would be stored. There is a Borough ordinance that prevents the storage of commercial vehicles on public streets that would be enforced. We would encourage the applicant to do all of their staging on-site. Those discussions haven't been had yet, and that's how we proceed.
There aren't mechanisms in place that would prevent storage of commercial vehicles overnight?
Yep.
And would also, say, a dumpster or a pile of gravel or something like that, they would need a permit?
Generally, the land development agreements that I do have certain controls. I mean, I can't control often what they do on the property, but certainly make sure that what they're doing on the property doesn't prove, whether it's dust, dirt, ice, mud, you know, doesn't go off into the public area.
Okay. That was your question. Any others? Entrance and exit on Conway Avenue?
Well, there's a baller that is part of the plan. A baller is just basically a, these are the ground that prevents vehicles from coming up Conway into the development. I believe that it's restricted for emergency vehicle access on, so all of the traffic or majority of the residents and guests using the development would be entering and exiting from Price Avenue.
Okay. Unless there is an ordinance?
Unless there is a thing.
And the last question that was asked in a number of different ways by members of the public, Mr. Walco, was about, you know, you have the zoning code, we have all of these different codes, why not kind of require the applicant to go further or to do more? And you had mentioned previously that if, say, this application required waivers, then maybe there would be an opportunity there because they were not within compliance of the code.
And it's not as much zoning as the subdivision land development ordinance, and the concerns are the stormwater ordinances that have been passed, and the simple answer is, we don't have to be able to do it. And if we wanted to take any steps now, they've already submitted plans, so the plans are already vested. We live in a world of laws, and if we don't like the laws because we create the laws and our ordinances, we can't be expected to work outside of our own laws.
So there is a process in the state that, once a plan is filed, the laws in place at the time of the filing are the ones that apply to that process?
Correct.
So that if we were to, say, make a change, it would not apply to this process?
It would not apply to this process. If we believe that our current ordinances needed to be readjusted to create additional constraints, we can start that process, and it would then impact any other plans, they have to follow those moving forward, but it wouldn't impact this. But I have no reason to think that for these technical aspects, our laws are outdated for the stormwater or for subdivision land development.
Because it's because I was ready to answer here, can you do this for the communities? Do you feel like we should, you know, the side of this question is as stated, but is this something we should bring later on to council to review, or is it, are we in line with most communities?
From a stormwater management ordinance, I believe you're in line with most other communities that are in the area. Now, Lower Marion is kind of a unique and different beast in that they have stormwater management requirements from '70, and they're very bust, but Haverford Township...
They're bust?
So they're more robust than Markville Park?
Exactly, yes. But Haverford Township, Springfield Township, Markville, and I'll say that the stormwater management ordinance is the model ordinance that's issued by the state.
Our current ordinance?
Correct.
Is the model ordinance issued by the state. Okay. Any other council member discussion? Mr. Poco?
Thank you.
All right. All in favor of approving Resolution 2017-002, 424 Conway Avenue, 31 Price Avenue, final subdivision land development plan? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Non-divisional. Thank you. Moving on to 8A. Mr. Manager, do you have a report?
I do. I'll go over some other things quickly because everyone, I hope everyone has taken attention to council meeting packets. In the future, if you prefer a paper one, let me know ahead of the meeting.
No, no paper.
I'm glad to hear that.
I don't want it.
This is phase one of a process whereby we want to get the information out to everyone in advance of the meeting and out to the public in a timely manner, in an accurate manner. Our next phase, we're going to investigate the use of tablet computers to really get away from papers altogether at these meetings, so everyone can come into the meeting and being able to look and follow along the meeting as it goes along.
Great.
Borough newsletter is going to, we're going to get that to press probably by the time for the next business meeting, so that will be going out. We have update on the parking study. There's a public meeting date that I'm playing some email tag right now, but we're going to set that either for the week of March 12 or March 19. We're going to start cycling information from the parking consultants back through the committee and all of council in the coming, starting next week, in the coming weeks, in preparation for that public meeting. So we're reactivating the Norbert Borough parking study. They're back, they've analyzed the data they've collected, and they're going to have some recommendations for us going forward. We had a bid opening in the Borough on, scheduled for Thursday, but as you recall, we had a snow event, so we pushed it back to Friday. We've got some really favorable results. We had nine bids come in on the 14 intersections that we put out to bid at the March 1st meeting. We'll have a short presentation. Council will need to decide which alternates it wants to add to the award package, and we'll have the, we'll award that bid at that meeting. We've got some really favorable results, and I think you're going to be very pleased with what we'll have to report. Windsor Avenue Green Street project went out for its second bid. We have 15 people already who came in for the bid docs that went out, that was advertised on Saturday, subsequent to revisions that we worked together with a second cost estimator on. We're hopeful that the revisions we've made will lead to some better results this next time around. Pre-bid meeting is February 22, and I don't have the date of the award, but we look to your March business meeting of council to do. Traffic engineer RFP closes next week. We already have one in, we expect at least a couple more along the way. Matt and I will take an opportunity to vet those proposals, speak with some of those people, and then bring to council our recommendations, see what you want to do from there. And in the office, we're getting busy. We're preparing for the 2017 audit and our first quarter financial reporting, which you'll start to see probably at the April finance administration meeting and then to council, so pre-pubbed. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Solicitor, do you have a report? No report. I have here the monthly reports, which will be available to the public.
They already are. They're in the meeting packet that's on the website.
Now, they are official because I'm moving this envelope from one to the other.
It's so exciting that they're out exactly.
For, oh, okay, so I'll take comments for the good of council, and then maybe some new business or old business. Comments for the good of council? Here you go. Is there any new business?
I have one. Well, it's old business, but it could be new business. This afternoon, I received a letter from Civil Service Commission Chair Jennifer Pryor, newly appointed by that board. That's right. And so they restructured themselves at their February 13 meeting. And Jennifer sends a letter that says this. This letter is to report the status of the Civil Service Commission action taken during its meeting on the February 13, 2017, regarding the list presented to council for the purpose of hiring a new officer. As a defect in the selection process was brought to the attention of this committee concerning the failure of the background check agency to notify the mayor of the applicant's background check results, the Civil Service Commission consulted their solicitor for advice regarding on how to proceed, and after a careful review, discussion, Civil Service Commission has made the decision to void the list due to procedural defect in selection process. And in addition, Civil Service Commission is requesting the opportunity to review and amend regulations before renewing any selection process to hire a new officer. And Mr. Gage is with us tonight, I didn't see him. If any council members have any additional questions. Go in there.
No, I have no questions. Thank you very much, Professor.
Sorry, Tom.
Just by it.
Really, what's the timing you anticipate getting the...
Sure. We were shooting for the March 1st meeting, we're not going to make that. Our intention is to have those to you in time for you to consider before the, was the March 16th meeting? So we would hope we could get that to you so you not, with enough time, review that. Does that have to go through an advertising process?
I mean, you're going, what we're talking about, the redoing of the rules?
We believe that we have to have an advertising meeting, and that's one of the issues we're trying to meet next week, but with the schedule, we can do that. So it won't be an advertising meeting, we hope. I'll say, once we get, whatever it is, in March 15th...
The review?
Was our timing.
We just redid the rules.
Yeah.
Was that done by ordinance? Was that done by the resolution? So if it's done by ordinance, it's just a week of advertising, it's not two weeks or so. And I had a discussion, Mr. Gage, about, and, you know, we'll make the resources available to get the, this review done as quickly as possible, and then in addition to approving a new set of rules, council could offer eyes to the service to begin the creation of a new list. That'll be the next step, so we can do that kind of all at once. Okay. Any other new business? Here you go. I'll take a motion for adjournment.
Aye, so move.
All in favor?
Aye.